Jeff, bad angle.
Number fifteen, which is discuss taking action on vehicle take-home policy. And Mr. Carrick.
Thank you. This item was requested at the last meeting by Councilman Billman to be on the agenda. And it related to the take-home policy, specifically those vehicles that leave the city. I asked each of the departments that allow vehicles to go home to analyze both the vehicles that are taken home at residences in the city and those outside the city. There are only two departments where vehicles are actually assigned for that purpose, and that's in the police and fire departments. You have a rather lengthy report from the police department and a simplified version of the chart for the fire department. And I'd like to start with the police chief providing three explanations.
Always three.
Chief, I read your report.
Thank you very much for... The reason that it's long and it's not brief, because quite honestly, I did a very brief chart, and then I reman the chart. And you just cannot get the picture in a chart. And like Councilman French and I have discussed many times, sometimes just looking at a chart or a graph just doesn't do... it just doesn't do it. And I just didn't feel like it was giving you adequate information. And along with this information plus some information that I'll give, I think it gives you a better idea of exactly what's going on so you can make an educated decision based on exactly what's happening and not just what I think might be happening based on a chart or whatever. And then I started, you know, my first sentence, I think. I'm not sure what the perception is, but just to make sure that I... we clear it up. You know, if there's a perception that a dozen cars are leaving the city every day, it's just not the case. On any given day, the average vehicles that leave the city... police vehicles leave the city are four. And of those four, one of the K-9s, you can't do anything about because you have to transport the K-9, and K-9 stays with the handler. You can't transport a K-9 in a person-owned vehicle. And you can't just lock it in a room here at the police department and have dispatch be able to... and it's not going to work.
Why?
The reason they have to have that vehicle locked so they can respond obviously to the animal, but so they can transport the animal, because they would not be able to got that. Yeah, okay. So that's, you know, a given or a no-brainer.
That's something.
Yes. And then two more of those four are detectives. Now, the detectives take the car home, whether it's fully equipped and it's there, the only the on-call detective is allowed to have any use of the vehicle outside the city. And that's very limited, just, hey, I'm equipped and ready, I'm going to go to the store and back. That's about it. And it's not like they don't shop and they go to the Timesville to go to lunch and things like that because they're on-call. So they have to be generally out ready available. And then the fourth of the four or so cars, it's an average of four, would be patrol supervisors. And that would be a patrol supervisor, ERT member, that is subject and ready for an ERT call-out. And like it describes here, the police vehicles, they're there to provide rapid mobilization of critical off-duty personnel during emergencies. Enhance police services and increase response time of specializing this to crime scenes. And that's really what it comes down to. If you really wanted to sum it all up, it's a very inexpensive insurance policy. We have four schools in this city. And the reason that we even have the ERT team is because we have four schools in the city. And when Columbine happened, what did every community agency do in this country, if not the world? They went, wow, if that happens here, are we able to deal with it? Well, then they kept getting worse, and it kept happening, and it kept happening. Now, it's just, you know, Columbine got a pass, if you will, because that wasn't... that wasn't... it was just so out of the norm, it never happened before, that, yes, they didn't handle it well, by their own admission, because they weren't equipped to handle anything like that. So now everybody started looking and saying, okay, at this point, this many years later, in a small city where there's four schools, which is unusual amount of schools for a small city, if something like that were to happen and we're not prepared for it, you know, how do we justify that? How do you say, well, these all these things are going around, and you know there's this possibility, and you have four schools in your city, and you're not prepared to deal with it? So really, that's the genesis of the ERT program. And those are the cars that go home: K-9, detectives, and a couple of ERT people. So, I mean, that's trying not to oversimplify it, trying not to get too lengthy. That's really what it comes down to as far as police officers.
Jeff, explain on the response on the ERT team. If they don't have their vehicles with the equipment in them, and they have to respond with their personal vehicles from wherever their residence is, explain the process.
I'd be glad to, as that's actually Amendment Attachment One. If you kind of... just to get a general framework, through a couple... two examples. If you pick seventeen... or if you pick 760 North Wickham Road, which I think is nearby, and everybody just happens to know that particular location, and that's about a mile and a half farther than anybody that works here lives. So that's just to get a rough idea of where everybody knows. If you're in your privately-owned vehicle, and you do not have a police car fully equipped and ready to go right now, okay, when you have to... you get the call, there's an active shooter, there's something that goes on, that there's a 305, grand, which incident or whatever. Okay, now you're POB, your personally-owned vehicle. You have to get in the car, and you have to drive at the speed limit of all the traffic, you know, regulations and blah blah. You have to go to the station. You have to find a car that's available, go in the station, collect your equipment. Now, you can try to store it all, but the guns have to be able to get there and locked and secured, you know, to put. So you collect your equipment, you give the keys to an available vehicle, and you get in and you respond. You've got your vehicle, and you're at your house, and you're fully equipped, and you're ready to go. Then you just get in your car, and you put your lights on, and you go from here to the city. And we actually just about physically demonstrated, okay, pull it through the back of the station, so I can give you a real accurate timeframe. And it's about a fifty percent... it's a fifty percent of time delay. So that, I mean...
No, it makes sense, but are we done? I mean, is that... do we need...
Yeah, no.
You know, and the only other thing I was going to add, it boils down to level of service. There's other nearby communities that don't have ERT teams. They rely on Robard County to do this.
I was going to say, it doesn't share...
It's a higher participation.
No, no. The sheriff... well, the sheriff has a SWAT team.
Right.
But a SWAT team is completely different. If you load the Fort St. John incident, and that was a SWAT team. SWAT team shows up, they get assembled, they get ready, and they go in. An ERT team is designed to go in right now. Right now, as backup's coming, they go in. Those ERT members are designed to go from wherever they are, whether they're working or not, and they go in right now. So there is a difference between a SWAT team and an ERT team.
How long does it take to get your ERT person who lives in Melbourne over to the beach if they're at the police reserve?
Probably ten minutes, a lot of minutes.
I guess the reason I ask is because as you describe what the ERT is required to do, ten or perhaps fifteen minutes is not right now.
Right.
Actually, it's probably all overdone by the time the person gets there.
Potentially, and that's why you have to... and that's why you have to rotate.
Perhaps the most important contribution that someone like that, especially a senior ranking person would make, would be the instantaneous contact, all right, with whoever the officer's on site.
Correct.
All right, and providing, you know, leadership from that regard, all right, at the speed of light versus sixty-one miles an hour of lights flash.
My point is, is if we had all the money in the world, we would do everything we could to the maximum extent possible with regard to public safety, but we don't. So we have to make risk value decisions. And we need to look at things like, how often have we had to have the ERT respond? We have a police force that allows us to have supervisors on, you know, on patrol all the time. That's what we pay them for, to be supervisors. We don't need supervisors to drive in from home to become supervisors, because we have supervisors here. You live in the town, and, you know, you're 24/7, 365. So what I'm saying is, is while it's nice to be able to say we want to be able to do all this, and we have done all this, maybe it's time we take a risk analysis, look at this, and say, hey, look, really, you know, for all of the milers that we drive back and forth, and all of the maintenance of that cost, the tires, the oil changes, the preventative maintenance, the et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is it worth that? Is it worth the investment that we put into that, especially when we have other options? Those other options being the sheriff's department help, as well as any sort of intermodal agreements we may have with anybody else. I'm just saying, we need to take that look. What is the total mileage driven by these vehicles that go out of the city every year? Do we know? And not only police, but also fire. Do we have any feel for that? What's the total miles that we drive down?
Yeah, we have... I can get you those numbers. I wasn't prepared to speak to this issue tonight.
Okay. Because that's really the thirty thousand foot level here. It's, you know, what's the total miles that we drive? What's that total cost in fuel, maintenance, wear and tear, tires, et cetera, et cetera? And then what is the number of times that those people have actually had to respond? And that's where we can do our risk value analysis. And I think that data will help us get through that. Here's another question for you. I like the idea of police cars in driveways in our city, because to me, that's a deterrent.
Oh, yeah. That's a proven deterrent.
Yeah. But here's a question for you. Why, like when Mr. Gannon gets up here and talks, does he say, well, I can't give you my address because I'm a police officer? Well, okay, but guess what? I drive down to Soto, and there's your car parked there. So...
Pretty poignant.
I've got an issue with that. But so, and I don't mind... I love deterrent within the city of Satellite Beach. So like I say, I do not have a bone to pick with taking the car home to the city of Satellite Beach, especially because I'm like you or somebody like that. But I do have an issue with cars that are in Melbourne or wherever, and deterring, you know, those groups. I mean, God love them, I love them, but, you know, they're not Satellite Beach people.
When you bring equipment with the vehicles, you have to bring, you know, you brought different equipment, rifles or something like that. Do weapons go out of town with these vehicles?
They do. And they bring them in the house with them?
Oh, I'm sure that's the case. But again, I'm just curious.
Yeah, they're always secure.
Let me just interject one other thing. When we did review it, the staff before talked about how often do you need this service? With our two active shooters, those who were at home were not involved in it because we had people on duty that were able to respond because they just had to have the training. So how often does it occur? No, but we just wanted, you know, this is the level of service at this point.
I understand, but again, it's a value judgment, and it's a, you know, it's a risk value judgment. And if, in fact, we haven't had those requirements, let's look at the amount of money we've spent.
It's huge.
It is.
It is huge. How many ERTs do we have in the city? Just some of the... and again, because of K-Peg, we just went through all this, to maintain about two thousand vehicles a year, six thousand dollars a year.
Three. Couple of points.
And, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
And when there's a call for... a call, a general call for ERT response, how many respond?
Whoever can get there the quickest.
Okay.
So sometimes you... sometimes you'll have the people that are working, sometimes the majority of them will be working, there are a lot of them will be working, sometimes a couple of them will be in the area, and, you know, you just can't. And I just want to make a couple of points before we just... When we started looking at this sometime ago, when the thought of vehicles was even on anybody's radar anywhere, the first thing the command staff did is Commander Hodges sitting there, and Staff Sergeant Pross, we all sat down and said, okay, we need to look at this, we need to look at this matter-of-fact. It might have been, and even though what I got from you, as a matter of fact, it might have even started the process of, yeah, I'm not sure, but it never happened. And what we have significantly pared back, the vehicle take-home procedure, we've eliminated it from multiple people that at one point had that ability. We've... I mean, what I'm trying to say is, I, as the chief of police, have looked at this program. I've looked at who takes cars home, I've looked at where they go, how far they go, what vehicles they bring. And there's only one person in here that currently, and I don't know how long that's going to be for, who is a supervisor that takes a car home outside the city, and that's just one person, and that's being looked at. I pared it down as much as I really can and still feel comfortable saying that we can respond to an emergency. And as far as, you know, how many times we've been there, to me, that's pretty sketchy, because, you know, and I'm not trying to be rude, but I've been in twenty-three years and I haven't shot anybody in my career, but I'm not willing to give it up, because when I need it, I want it there. And if I gave it up and said, well, you know, all those times I trained, and all the times I went to the gun range, and all the times I practiced with it, I haven't ever had to shoot anybody with it, so I don't need it. You know, let's just consider that.
No, no, I'm with you. But like Mr. French just pointed out here, you backed him up on it, there's three folks that are available within the city limits.
There is.
So, and like I said, I don't have a beef with cars in the city. I have a beef with cars going outside the city limits. And, you know, and...
I didn't know, was that the answer to the question? I think he said, how many ERTs do we have?
None in the city.
Well, US resident in the city.
Yeah.
Okay, three that live in the city.
So that's my point, that we have that force here in the city, that we can respond to it. We have supervisors on duty all the time.
Almost.
You're here 365, 24/7. I mean, it just seems to me that it's... especially in these times.
Is this... does the discussion revolve around just one vehicle? Because when the chief saw that, there were four vehicles. We know that...
That's an average. It depends on who, you know, it depends on who's working. If it happens to be the, you know, and keep in mind, when we say cars go home, it's not every day either. You drive your personal car or...
Or should...
They get the car.
But I mean, we talked about the dog, which is... and the two detectives. So really, the average was four, so is it just one vehicle?
No, no. The only one I could think of that goes outside the city that I see at a recent course is the dog.
Yeah, that's...
Oh, so the detectives are... should not have a car?
I don't think so. How often do the detectives have to respond from their homes?
That happens all the time. And many times, the detectives are responding, not only... they're not responding just from their house to come to the station, because that makes sense, right? Just drive to the station, and then you go. But they're going to other places. They're going to the rape centers, you go to the crisis center, you go to the hospital. They're, I mean, they're going to different places. So now you're talking about, you gotta... now your delays are even more significant. You gotta rape them at the hospital, you call a detective. They gotta drive in from their house, you know, and then to go back, or to go to the jail, and do some... multiple things that they have.
So it sounds to me like, in your estimation, the only one we could really get away with is doing away with the EFTs that are outside the city.
I would not recommend it professionally, but...
Jeff, do you have... Just to interject, Councilman Billman, as far as the ERT team goes, one of the things we talked about, we talked about the SWAT team, the county-wide SWAT team, depending on that is, we've had experiences with them in the past. You have to realize you're bringing an outside team into the city who makes decisions based on their policies, procedures, which are good. But it sort of takes the control out of the police chief and the folks that live and breathe Satellite Beach. And so by bringing in your own team, you get people dealing with local people who know local people on a local level. Once the SWAT team comes in from the sheriff's department, excuse me, they take it over, and we sort of lose some of that decision-making ability and things like that. So that's some of the importance of maintaining also our in-house team.
And Commander Hodges, if we had that happening all the time, I'd be all over it. I would agree with you. But the fact that it doesn't happen all the time, in fact, it hasn't happened in quite a while, in fact, it sounds like never that we've had to bring somebody in from the EFT from outside the city, that's what gives me pause.
Well, we have brought it in, and we have activated it. No, it doesn't happen often, no. But it's just, it's, you know...
And we have the capability here within the city. We have three in the city.
We have a limited capability, yes. If the incident called for more than three, then I guess we're... then we might be a jam.
Or we supplement with the sheriff, or whoever else is on the unit. You know, guys, again, you know, it would be great if we had the money to do everything all the time, but we don't. So we have to make some decisions.
How much is the money? See, we haven't discussed, because I don't know how much it is, and I'm listening to a person that has been on the police force since he's been eighteen years old, and has achieved the rank of four stars, and is telling us, I need this. This is safety. I think if we stay here and say, chief, I want you to have it, but I can save $3,000, but I want you in that position, we either have to look at it further, what's the savings? He is standing here, sitting there, telling us, it will come, the police department will not be able to handle all the crises that it has. I pulled the alert, you pulled the alert. We didn't fly, but we were ready to go to war. I was ready to go to war, and so were you. And I think that they're ready to go to war. I don't want to take that capability away from them. For an ERT vehicle, one ERT vehicle, I'm not even sure what the savings is.
You know, and the issue is, and feel someone's phrase, we need a deeper dive into that particular issue, because are the number of vehicles in the police department going to be reduced if we don't have them assigned to these individuals, or are they just going to be left at the station? A determination's still to be made. And so the K-Peg report has pages of information on vehicles, and we're going to be looking at that. And, you know, we haven't assembled all the information to make the totally enlightened decision, because are we going to have that level of vehicles? The cost is really going to not be that much different if we keep the vehicles, the same number of vehicles at the station.
Right.
You know, so you need to take a look at that.
You have to get rid of it in order to save money. And I'm not asking for a decision tonight, but what I'm trying to do is encourage this thought process that we bring your department budget to the count.
I agree.
Okay.
And I agree, and like I said, that's why we've made significant changes to it. And to just answer the question that was out there, if you take away the K-9 and the two detectives, there's only two people on the entire police force that would be taking a car home, the ERT members outside the city, two. So if we establish detectives and K-9, so we're talking about two cars that work four cans, so that would be in two weeks, that would be five trips. That would be five trips every two weeks for two cars. That's it. That's the entire cost of being able to maintain the ERT and the service and everything that we have right now.
Those two for the ERT.
Just good, to put it in perspective.
That's good.
Do we have a feel for how do we track mileage based on duty use and off-duty use?
Yes, but it's... no, no, I'm sorry. We don't track the actual mileage. What we track is the policy that what they're allowed to do. For example, they can go within a couple of mile square radius in their car, and that's it, down the street and back. Again, they don't get in the car and go, let's go, you know, go shopping, and go to the mall, and we go to lunch, and that's not... It's, I'm working, I gotta go to the store, I get the car, I go to the store, and I come back.
Are there GPSs in the cars, or no?
No. An RMS system would have that.
New RMS system would have that.
New RMS.
That's in the K-Peg report, too.
We would like to... we also want to talk to the fire department, right? Because they have a report. Jeff, you can stay there.
Yes, I can.
We don't want the public comment. Well, if you want to be within those fire departments.
As the council goes through the K-Peg report, there's charts in there showing all the different levels of service and functions provided by police and fire primarily, in a comparison with other municipalities and what services they provide. And we provide a lot of specialized services that are not in other departments. And so that's probably the larger view that we're going to have to take, which ones are we going to have to take? Because there's training components and costs involved with all those services, and equipment requirements, and, yeah, those are large issues.
Fair. The second part, this is a part of...
This is part of the...
I stand for.
I'm easy.
Good evening.
It's just me. Okay. Two staff vehicles, operations commander Abernathy, who lives here in town, my staff vehicle, I live twenty-two miles above town. I recognize also the perception of how things are viewpoint, and they are accurate perceptions of these people in regards to me, since it's a take-home vehicle for me. In my case, I have attempted, and I believe I did a really good job at it, I've been paying my own gas. And this is not something I've been doing like in two weeks, because this was an agenda item. This has been for quite some time. And I have been doing that because I recognize in the fiscal issues we were, is that, look, you know, we make sure everything's aligned up right. So in my case, I was trying to do the right thing. Am I going to make my staff vehicle, am I in the sand in anything? Or no? For me, my primary responsibility, this was mentioning K-Peg, yes, I'm an administrative personnel at the rank that I'm at. That's my administrative responsibilities. Do I respond to as many calls as I used to when I was an operation commander? No. But just like Jeff doesn't respond to the same amount of calls he did when he was at a different rank. On the average, and I'm just doing this on a daily here, I would say that I probably have responded, I respond at only average of seven to ten times a year. Is it a lot? Absolutely not. The reasons why I come in are for incidents that are going to be larger. Is every incident I come to, is it absolutely necessary that I show up there to take command of that incident? The answer is no. But that's not to say it doesn't happen, and I will just say that for the last one that did occur was for our tanker incident that we had up on Sherwood and Parkway. When we think about that, our operations commander had the initial component of it, and as that incident was expanding, I'd pick up the rest of the command from that point forward. So is this going to dramatically hinder the operations of Satellite Beach Fire Department? No. No. And whatever decisions made, this is my thing, I'm certainly, there's a lot of things I could worry about, this ain't it. But I do want to say, though, it's just that, for perception standpoint, I was trying to do the right thing, and I believe that as we go forward, I'm going to have to even work out in some other way. Maybe there is another way to look at this. Mr. French, to answer your question, because I'm sure this will probably come. The vehicle that I have is a 2002, I believe it's the... was purchased by donations, is our donation fund. The insurance on that vehicle is $337 a year. And I went back, and I pulled all the costs for that vehicle, and I pulled what the fuel cost for what we had back, and I had extracted those years because the data wasn't there, but everything remained relatively consistent, because I haven't moved around a whole lot. And the average cost per mile is about eighteen cents a mile. That's what it runs for the operation vehicle. Again, but this is not my line in the sand, and, you know, whatever your decision is, it's fine.
Sure, additional presentation. We'll come back to the council.
Well, I think, I don't know if I'm ready yet to make a decision, because you really don't have the cost value, but one of the issues that's bewildering to me is that we don't have a better method, we, as a city, to track the mileage on these vehicles and know where they're going. Bewildered by that. So I think they're tied into this as also a mechanism to track mileage and wear and tire on these vehicles. It's just not reality when you have a company vehicle, they know where it is, they know what the insurance premiums are, they know how much fuel is going into it, where it's going, so.
By my comment, I believe, I can only speak for myself, but I can't imagine it being any different. I know what my cost to wear and...
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about the city in the whole. We know exactly how much mileage is...
We know we do oil reduce, which is every 3,000 miles.
No, we have every record on any vehicle going back to the day it was purchased. And the mileage, we have all the mileages. We actually generated a report for the K-Peg that gave mileage, with the exception of one vehicle, and I still don't figure that out, but actually the mileage, the fuel used in a year's period, the actual miles per gallon. So, I mean, all those records are available.
Well, I think then, again, it's kind of like the issue here, we claim to get through the report, and then...
Yeah. The data that Tom Farke divided will contribute to the understanding. Yeah, I'd just like to add that three of the five council members here are former military. And we were... we had military vehicles available to us to use for official purposes. I will tell you that the security forces, for example, on a base, you'd never see a security forces car driven home to somebody's base quarters to show the security forces vehicle, you know, sitting around on the base. Those vehicles were basically looked at as taxpayers' property, and should be... were essentially used only for... Those vehicles were, were basically looked at as taxpayers' property and should, were essentially used only for official purposes. No, and definitely no personal use of those vehicles. So again, is it, is it different? I guess that's something we all have to understand. The, and the data that Alan provided on the fire vehicle, it was clear, when we saw the data on Chief Hughes' vehicle, that his, his vehicle was getting 22 miles per gallon when a similar vehicle was only getting about 2. And I just go, wow, how does he do that? And I realized, because he's throwing his own gas into the vehicle from time to time and only occasionally filling the vehicle up with city food.
But the, and I'll tell you, Chief, if you would, if you would, you know, want to do it on your own, that would certainly be welcome from me. Because I can tell you that, that there is a perception, especially with your specific issue.
I know.
And it's not the gas, it's all of the maintenance and the tires and the oil changes and all of that stuff that goes with that. I mean, I've got to respond to the KPEC when we have an emergency. Why? I don't know, I don't know what I'm going to do, I'm not the admin, right? I'm the leader of the pack, so I got to go up there. But guess what? I go up in my own POV and I get in my GOV when I get up there. And that's just it.
We can get the mop ends.
Say again?
We can get a mop ends.
Yeah, exactly. So that, and I'm just telling you, you know, we're going to review it and everything, but, but that would be, I think, a good move on your part.
You can get a car allowance or a mileage or something.
Yeah, if you need to respond.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to respond.
Yeah.
You know.
I had, I had another good point was, Chief Pearson, you're in charge of citizens on patrol vehicles.
Correct.
Something went around a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know if I followed up or got any, anybody else to tell me why. Why was there a picture taken in the Walmart parking lot in the citizens on patrol vehicle with our stellar volunteer of the year walking out to that vehicle in his, in his civilian cutoff jeans, buying paint? On my tax money, paying for the maintenance and the gas and everything on that vehicle. I never got a response to that, so I thought you could.
Actually, I can probably answer the question.
That'd be great.
I, I actually saw that picture myself and it sent me as part of, you know, because of my mail. I asked the question, and the citizens on patrol and their vehicle is routinely used to make runs to places like Walmart to buy supplies for the city. That's what I was told.
That's, I mean, that's, that's part of the point of that. If, if we didn't have them going to the departments, mayor departments for pickup uniforms, then we'd have to pay for them to have them shipped. If we had, if we had to get supplies at Walmart, or wherever we got to go, or we got to go to state turnbowl, then we have to take a staff person or a police officer or a paid person to do it. This is what they're doing, this is what they supplement.
And about the only way you could avoid that perception would be to have more or less unmarked vehicle, you know, that went into those places. But I understand what you're saying about perception, perception.
And certainly, most of the gentlemen that do that service are volunteers, and, and they could use their own personal vehicle, certainly for a five mile run up the road here to get some paint. And it's just the perception again, in this day and age, is not good, something like that out there.
Well, yeah, if they're in that car, they should be in their uniform. So if somebody's wearing, you know, cutoff shorts and personal, they wouldn't be driving.
We know that.
They come in in their uniform, they check out the car, they get in the car, and they go somewhere. So I'd be real interested here about somebody not in uniform and.
Email you the pictures.
Well, I saw the picture, but that's just the car in Walmart, it's not in the background. But that particular day, I got that picture just a day or two later. There were people that came into work and were specifically asked, we need this and this and this to keep a staff person going to do it. That's what the volunteers do. If not, it takes somebody else, it's getting painted, it's not going to get painted around. That's what volunteers do.
We recently had a photo, a question of a police car on a Saturday night going up A1A by the Ties. And it was a school resource officer going through the prompt. You know, you put the school, because that's where you want to appear on.
What school would they go to the school for?
Is it either.
The orders?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, did she have her? How young are these people? All right, the council is going to, has decided, I think, I am going to open this to public comment. What's going to come back is that we're going to tackle this in more review of budget items. But if you'd like to make a public comment, please come on. Steve.
So you had to leave the same address. There are a couple of issues, I think, a legal issue that Mr. Beadle may need to look into. One, I agree with you, it's a cost value risk assessment thing. But I guarantee you that if you have somebody that gets shot at a high school, it's satellite, R or whatever, and a lawyer gets a hold of the fact that we cut out ERT for $3,000 a year, you're talking about a judgment that's going to be, you know, $3,000, whatever. There was also, and I can't remember the specifics of it, but there was an EEOC decision in late or early 80s on the difference in benefits of taking a vehicle from one jurisdiction, one city into a county. And as I remember, the EEOC said that you can charge the person for the additional mileage, but you could not deny them the use of the vehicle within the city if you're giving that benefit to the other people in the city. See what I'm saying? Because then you have two levels of benefits for people.
Yes, it's not a benefit, it's a duty requirement. That's, that's the way it's being actually driven.
It's.
If it was treated as a benefit.
Yeah, then they could be taxed on it. Actually, if it's a benefit, we could have actually taxed them.
Right.
So it's actually a duty.
Okay, I'm just, there's a, I'm just saying to be.
Systems.
Yeah, there, there needs to, I would, I would hope the council would have to look into a legal aspect of it, not just the dollars. That's all I'm saying.
That's good, thanks. For the public comment.
Dana Giltner, resident, at the risk of getting run over. I'm not sure if this is the time to bring it up or not, but I think you could address when fire trucks are supposed to be driving around. I, I said to.
Let me, let me, let me think about it, I know what you said, let's see, because Pat wants to talk on this.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see what you want, Pat.
Pat Sands, Great Duty, Sherwin Avenue. Jeff, how many do you have ERT-trained police officers doing here? How many total, ERT? Excuse me?
Well, including the.
Nine. Nine, and how many, how many of those nine would have signed for the city?
Two.
Two. And.
Well, where were they? No, that's not. Yeah, the, I was thinking about the K Carson. And there's two ERT members that live outside the city that take care of the Carson.
That's all, okay, okay.
Well, Commander Hyde is a detective also, so that, so that would be.
Okay, to me, that's not a big deal. And how much money have you saved just in the last six months, police department?
We're doing pretty good.
How much?
Over $30,000.
Over $30,000. Okay, I happen to know that last year, there was an incident on Grant Avenue. And you had your ERT called.
Well, they were, they were being mobilized by.
They were being mobilized.
The ERT members that were there took care of the situation.
I'm going to tell you something. Your, your fire chief and your police chief are saving money right now. And they have been. If you take issue with two, possibly two people living outside of the city that are ERT members, and you have an incident, and all you need is one, you're going to be very, very sorry. And I think you should leave this business of ERT alone. It's not, they're doing a good job, leave them, let them do it.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right, let's, I haven't forgotten the, the issue that I'm going to bring to you on use of the fire trucks. But let's see what we want to do on agenda item number 15 for the council. Which is discussion, take action on rules, take policy. We just want to wait for levels of service, it's like a budget. Yeah, department budget discussion. And that's going to be within 30 days.
Yep.
Much sooner than that.
Much sooner than that, right?
We want to meet July 31st, so much sooner.
Okay, okay. You, I mean, the presentation. Is that okay? Okay, thank you, man. There was one thing that came up, and I had seen it a couple of times, on use of the fire trucks. It's not an agenda item, we don't need to answer it now, but we do, we do need a response on that, that item.
Go ahead and answer it.
What's the question? Well, like I say, it's not an agenda item, we could send you the email on it. It's about taking the vehicles to different places.
The truck.
The trucks that, that to, to, to non.
Public. There was an email generated that I received, and it was in relationship to firefighters going to Publix to get food. And the specific, that's specific, it wasn't.
Correct. Did you, did you, has that, has that been responded to yet?
Yeah, yes. Now, the bigger question is, is are they allowed to go to Publix? I mean, it wasn't us, but are they allowed to? This is what the policy and the processes is that, one, we highly encourage our, our providing provisions to work, that's one. You have people who may be called in short notice to come in, bill ship, if they don't have enough provisions at their home, don't have time to stop at the store. Or, you know, people that get hung up, that has a hungover, I have to say the right way. Hell no. And, and they brought provisions for one day, but now they're going to be there for two. When we're at full staff, and full staff is by personal duty, is that, what they'll do is one person will take the staff car up to Publix to get the provisions for the day. If they're a minimum staffing, I do, and I allow the squad truck to make one trip if necessary, only if necessary, to go get the provisions for the day. I encourage it to make this all part of, if they're out on a call at 10 o'clock in the morning on A1A, then I'm not sure that I'm really out of whack here for them to go two blocks to the left and pull in and grab their provisions. Do they go to Publix every day? The answer to that question is no. Do they go to Publix? Yes, not necessarily in the staff car. Rarely is it in the fire truck. And this has been in the last two to three months when the citizens comments have come up. We look back, just like Jeff, we hear, we listen, and we're coming back and we're trying to figure out a way to take what the, what the wishes were, what the comments from council were, and try to put this into a format that is workable and, and practical, if you will. There had also been some questions on whether or not do we allow our employees to go eat at Long Dogger's or B-Sycrill or whatever? The answer to that question was yes, absolutely, and we let them go eat, eat there. Why? Because, you know what? When they go out and they, and they, they making their provisions for their food for the day, and they have tried three or four times to cook their meal and it's got ruined because they're back to back home, I want them to go eat. But when the questions came up, we said, no, can't go into the restaurants. Just as easily as we corrected that problem after direction and the, well, I say direction at the request of listening, I actually had the two restaurants call me and complain that our guys weren't coming there. And, and I'm, I'm not making this stuff up, but one of them said, the city's not business friendly. You mean they can't spend money in my restaurant? And I said, look, it's kind of like what I just said about my staff vehicle. This is not a line in the sand that I'm looking, this is, I'm not going to get all wound up about this. To put this in the final note here, Beachside Grill is one of those restaurants. Or maybe the Cinco de Mayo, or they also have a hat derby day that goes on, and it just so happened that it was Cinco de Mayo on the same day. They get a fundraiser on their day and, and maybe $350 donation to the city. And actually, the first that brought the chickens and the hook that's paid for the gas for you guys, they're going to come and eat in the restaurant. And not making this stuff up, I went to the restaurant to be, it was a Saturday night, I came in to go to the restaurant for the day. I was in my city clothes, my wife and I were sitting in the corner, the firefighters walked in, and the whole restaurant stood in standing ovation because they were, and I had people coming up and saying, we're so glad you're here. So, you know, just as easily as, you know, some of them think we shouldn't be doing this, then you have another group that says, you know, really? But we followed through, and I didn't allow them to go to restaurants anymore, and the one trip, trying to.
I don't think they want everyone to say that, they don't go to restaurants.
Well, I, no, 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 and nobody gave me clear direction, and let, let's, let's say it. There, through citizens' comments and things that I heard and what I interpreted, I tried to put something into a process or a policy that worked. And I have to tell you, my perception was, was that there was, that there was going to a restaurant for a certain purpose.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
And nobody saw directly.
Well, the discussion I remember, because we had a diesel engine break at 70,000 miles on a pumper truck that cost the citizens of this city a lot of money to fix. The issue was that there were citizens that saw the pumper truck sitting at Publix on a daily basis, and they were wondering why that was. Why are we using our pumper truck that we just busted an axle on at 70,000 miles? Why are we using a pumper truck to go back and forth to Publix? That was the issue. It wasn't about going to restaurants. So the, the issue became, why don't we use the, the small truck, the, the staff truck, or whatever you guys call it, to go back and forth? A, you save on gas, B, you save on maintenance. And, and it seemed like the best, the best option. So please don't try to, please don't try to put it back on the council, but we said, oh, you guys can't go to, you guys can't go to restaurants, because that's not what was said. And it wasn't the fact that we didn't want you, we, we don't want your guys to go out and eat, that's not the, that's not the issue either. The issue is, is we want you, we want to make sure that we are being good stewards of the citizens' money and that you are being good stewards of the resources that you are given.
Oh, yes, right, that's all, I didn't mean, I didn't, I was not, it was a false idea. I was taking all the items that I had heard, and that was what, I was trying to read everybody's needs, and I didn't mean to throw that back, because that was the intent.
And just saying, I've been out in restaurants where, you know, I know that things have changed a little bit the last few months, but they've actually said to me that the firemen have come in and said, we're not allowed to come in here anymore. So.
I, I.
I'm just telling you, you can say, you can tell Beachside Grill story, but there are other restaurants where specifically firefighters have gone and said, we're not allowed to come in here anymore.
I'm not aware of that.
Chief, one of your meetings, just like I told the, the police chief, when, when are your general meetings?
For staff meetings?
Yes.
I don't have any schedule, we don't have them on a regular basis because we see each other pretty regularly already, just as shift exchange, but we can schedule one.
Because I, I think I'd like to come, I think some of us would like to come, and just talk, it's, it's perceptions, we got to get the perceptions. I thank you for coming tonight, and we're going to press with agenda item number 16. Agenda item number 16, discuss, take action on frees on an interim basis on a payout of sick leave upon termination from city employment for exempt personnel.
This item was requested as an A sec meeting by Councilman Billman. Initially, the discussion was addressing all personnel, then during discussion of union versus non-union, and the agenda was identified on an interim basis pending the KPEC report for exempt personnel. Essentially, there's about 11 exempt personnel. I provided a list of who, who those individuals are. This is another item that is reviewed in quite a detail in the KPEC report regarding the sick leave policies and asked to be explored in greater detail. I did provide the council with a memorandum from the city labor attorney, Wayne Helfe, in anticipation of the KPEC including this in their report. I posed those specific questions to him last month, and the direction that he provided back to the city was that the council is the driver on this particular issue, and you can determine whether it's union or non-union, what the ultimate policy will be regarding sick leave issue. There's different ways that you're going to have to go about approaching it depending upon the status, whether they're covered by the personnel policy or a union contract, or the firefighters who are in the process of forming a union. And then there's also the. And then, there's also the issue relating to the pension issue. Wayne briefly addresses that. He didn't have a specific, uh, uh, response to the one seventy-five, one eighty-five, because that's very much a pension issue, might have to be addressed by a, a labor pension determining. But, uh, that's the information that I had to share with you. And I also provided the sick leave policies from the personnel policy and the FOP contract. And we went in direct, in direction from the city council.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council.
Well, since I brought it up, um, I, I think that, that we should have a, a policy change, um, that directs it's, A, sick leave be used for sick leave purposes. I mean, that's how it is at my company and every company that, that I know of. If you are going to the doctor, if you're getting surgery, if you're sick, um, you use sick leave. Uh, you don't save sick leave as some 401K program to be, to be cashed out at the end, and, and, uh... So, that in and of itself, just making the policy that people use sick leave for sick leave purposes would bring down, I think, a lot of those, um, a lot of those balances that we have sitting out there. We have quite a balance right now of, of, um... Well, it's just that they...
Oh, but eleven, exactly.
Yeah.
And I have to give, let me start interrupting, but I do have a list for all employees on sick leave use, and five-year cost analysis, however, I haven't been able to pull it all together, we've been working on it, but, uh, that, that report will be...
But, I, I looked at a, a report here on, uh, payouts from the last five years of folks who have left or are employed. And we've paid fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars out to somebody who left. A couple of folks made ten thousand dollars on their way out the door. I, I just, you know, corporations don't do that. Corporations don't do that, and many government agencies don't do that. Our, right now, it's a fact that our city employees make more per capita on average than our citizens do. That's, that's not a good, that, that, that's not a good, uh, um, setup. And by doing this, by giving our city employees a perk in this respect that, that our, that our citizens don't have, by and large, in, in their companies, those who are still working, um, that just makes that disparity between citizens and city employees that much bigger. And to me, that's an issue. So, I think this is something that we need to look at. Uh, as we look at the KPEC, and as you look, like I, like we were talking earlier, um, as you look at, uh, the city's budget, the proposed budget that you're gonna bring us, I would hope that this sort of a, a thought process would go into that. And if you feel that it is appropriate, you would be able to save some money as the CEO of our company, um, by, by changing the sick leave policy, then I would be, I would, I would love to see that happen, if you believe that's the thing to do.
I, I also provided a, I'm a member of a flipping service essentially, that, that has different, uh, flippings from statewide newspapers. And it would appear that, uh, the state of Florida's gonna be addressing this in the upcoming legislative session. Whether they'll be successful in getting legislation passed, I don't know. But, the article points out of the financial impact of, of the sick leave, uh, provisions, um, statewide. I would strongly suggest that whatever is done, that if we look at the benefits that happens for employees, that we put together a procedure, or put in place a procedure, that allows for feedback from your employees, because clearly, the council is not gonna eliminate sick leave, vacation, healthcare, but there's probably going to be modifications to those benefits. And I believe the enlightened approach would be to, to have some type of communication with those who are, are gonna be most affected by it, and that would be the employees who I, I've always viewed as the assets to the city in terms of providing what we do for our citizens. So, I'd like to be able to also come back with a, a procedure that would provide for that two-way communication.
Well, but I think that that two-way communication should happen between you, the CEO of our company, and the employees.
Right.
We're the board. So, you need to bring, you, you, you need to bring us your new policy with regard to what you work out with your employees as the CEO of the company. And then you bring it to your board, and we say yea or nay. I don't think it's the board's, it's the board's place to be negotiating with employees.
That's not what I was suggesting, but to, to, uh, encourage that input, so that as we, uh, ultimately devise whatever changes are going to be made to any of the best benefits policies, that the input of the employees is concerned.
Well, I agree with you. Between you and your employees. What are the employees ultimately gonna say, "Oh yeah, I like this, I like to have a thousand hours." And, and why don't we say, you know, we all, I, I know Greg and I, and I'm sure you do, you get the, uh, Ken Smalls, uh, League of Cities news blast two or three times a week on our emails and stuff, and they always have stuff about that, and the latest one was Leesburg or somewhere, and, and they said, they were addressing these same issues, and they said that they're gonna have a maximum of two hundred and forty hours of sick leave, and no cash out at the end, and those type of things. I don't know if you're suggesting, what, see what the state policy was gonna be, or something, to look to see what they're gonna do.
No, I, I just, I passed that on, because I didn't know what, what council members received those flippings, but it, it, it shows the magnitude of the issue. It's just not a satellite beach issue, just as the pension, the unfunded liability of pensions. Most, most cities are confronted with the type of challenges that we have. It's not an isolated thing that, that Satellite Beach alone...
No, no, I, yeah, I, I agree with that. By the way, on this chart, on this chart that I got on the five-year, uh, folks, I didn't see the retired police chief on here. Did, did, did he get sick leave paid out?
Oh, no, he would not be. He, he entered the drop, uh, in two thousand and six, that's a, that's a five-year protection, I believe, the last five years. So, he was in the drop, and you enter the drop, you get paid for that at that point.
So, he got paid out in two thousand and six?
He got paid out in oh-five or oh-six for that. And so, but he did get a, a payment, and, and as I point out, because of the ninety-nine oh-one monies, police and fire, the four folks that are, are the examples, the two chiefs and the two commanders, um, I'm not sure how that will impact, because, um, that ninety-nine oh-one money, which by law have to buy additional benefits, was for the buyout of sick leave and vacation to be included in their retirement. That was a state law, but you can only spend that money on improved benefits.
Well, they had a good, it was obvious.
They had a good cheerleader, too, that, that called a special session after we got elected governor in nineteen ninety-eight, and put it in place. I suppose, as I said, I saved that magazine because that...
We wonder why governments are going down the tubes.
Uh, I'd like to take a step back, because if you look at your future agenda items, there's two items on the agenda that I've had on the future agenda that have not been brought up, the Personnel Policy Handbook, which I would have liked to take, taken a look at it from start to beginning. Um, and then we're at dealing with one issue, which we might have to deal with coming back. And also, an HR position, because we really need to have someone, I believe, to write a Personnel Policy Handbook. And so, I have, I, I wanna go back to and ask the question, you said that these employees are exempt, but in the Personnel Policy, it says the only employee that is exempt, that is exempt is the city manager.
That's exempt in the provision of the Personnel Policy, but exempt in terms of the positions.
I understand.
There's two different, that's...
No, I understand, I have it right here, I, I, I'm not exempt versus exempt. So, you're saying that these employees, which is for the law, for the salary employees?
Yes, and, and, and they're covered by the Personnel Policy. They're all except for the city manager.
Okay. So, how do you accrue so much sick time? Because I've looked at other Personnel Policy Handbooks, and it says, "The purpose of sick leave is to provide employees a measure of financial protection in, in event of a short-term illness, and immediate bonus, uh, members' illness or personal medical business." And typically, this is, now, it's, it's not standard, but you would accrue, let's say, forty hours a year. Uh, you could take those sick hours, and they roll into the next year, but the maximum you could accrue is eighty. And when you're terminated, or when you, you lose those hours, it's, it's not a, it's not a savings account. I, I'm not quite understanding it, that's why you have short-term disability and long-term disability. So, I have a real issue, issue, um, with this, and I have a lot of issues with a lot of things that are chapped here in the Personnel Policy Handbook that haven't been addressed, or we haven't put on the agenda. Um, this is, this is way over the top. If you could just take one average person on this, and you put that into dollars for me, that would be great. 'Cause I don't know if you have that, I don't know what you're looking at, but I don't have anything. So, just give me a position, and give me a dollar for your neighbor to leave in good standing in two weeks.
Well, um, I don't know about that, but I can tell you that the, that the, let's see here. The city clerk left with a check for fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars for sick leave. For payout of sick leave.
The policy, the policy, and it's barely standard in Pervara County municipalities, is that our provision is fifty percent of up to three hundred, uh, up, fifty percent of up seven hundred and twenty hours, with a maximum of three hundred and sixty hours, is paid at, at when you leave city employment.
It's just not making sense to me. I'm not, I'm not getting it, and I don't understand also, it, it goes into, what is the policy for salaried employees and comp time?
Do we always, they don't get comp time?
So, how do you accrue so much sick time? You cannot, never be sick or take no appointments or...
The Personnel Policy provides for an accrual of eight hours per month of sick leave. Of sick leave. Which is ninety-six hours per year.
But what, but what Councilman Dan is saying is if you don't have comp time, how are so many people not spending their sick time and accruing so much of it? In other words, people have to get sick, they have to use, use their sick time to go be sick. So, it seems like they're, they're not taking their sick time, but they're getting sick, so they're, how are they making that work?
I don't know how much that occurs, but they're allowed to accrue eight hours per month.
Right.
Ninety-six hours per year, up to a maximum accrual of one thousand eighty hours.
True. Okay, ma, ma, maybe what we need to do is workshop this. Yeah, workshop the whole Personnel Policy.
There, I'm looking at some people here, and I went, went on the inter, uh, on the webpage, that have only been employed since two thousand and five, that are, that are almost at three hundred hours, this is just not making sense to me.
Well, if you can accumulate ninety-six hours per year, and if you've been here since two thousand and five, that's almost, that's seven years, and if you don't take the sick leave, then you will accumulate well over three hundred hours. You know, that's, it can be almost, it's in the six hundred.
Mike, do we have a policy that if you are, if you are sick, in other words, if you're sick, going to the doctor, getting surgery, something to do with being sick, um, that they must take sick leave for that?
They can also put in for vacation these time.
I don't remember that either. When you're sick, you're sick, you take sick time. That's what time is for, vacation time is for vacation time. There's reasons, you know, there's rationale for it, I haven't here, but...
I think...
I, I think this... Well, you know, you know, I've beaten this one to death, and I've gone through every ordinance. This, this Personnel Policy was adopted in nineteen eighty-seven. Did you have a workshop to increase every time you amended the ordinance? I mean, if you just kinda increased the pay grades, and then added a section that we're gonna add this policy, I mean, do we have to work? I don't get it. I, I just...
But what's your suggestion, Councilman Dan?
I'm thinking it needs to be changed tonight, and, and, um, and I have to be honest, this is the Personnel Policy Handbook and all the ordinances. Uh, there were minor amendments, no one's ever taken a comprehensive look at this Personnel Policy since it was written. All that's happened is that they've adopted ordinances and changed things to, to, yeah, when it, when it comes crunch time to save money, we have to workshop or go back to the employees.
I confirm, but we're not gonna review that whole thing.
No, I'm just saying, but for the sick portion, which, I, I just, it, it's actually kinda making me sick that, that, maybe...
Take your time.
I don't have any left.
You know, if you wanna handle this, Nick, but I don't see anyone on here of the eleven that are immediately going to...
But it's, but, but it is accruing for everyone, it's, it's not just for these eleven.
No, I, you know, it is good to look at it, but these eleven people, nobody's leaving them by, by June sixth, unless, unless there is a run on the bank.
Well, but, but, and I agree with the mayor, but would it be, would it scratch the itch, Councilman Dan, if we, uh, made a motion to direct the mayor to implement a policy that people use sick time when they're sick? Actually, what did I say today? I'm sorry, city manager.
Well, we're gonna have to call the council, 'cause I would like to find something. Your fellow colleagues?
Well, I, I thought that we discussed first, and then I'll do it.
We're having a discussion.
Are you okay?
I'm pretty online, but I have one more comment, I just have to find the order.
Okay. I'd like to, uh, I'd like to open agenda item number sixteen, uh, payout of sick leave for exempt personnel for public, uh, citizen.
Michelle French, resident. Okay, this is one of those issues that I sit back and I listen to these numbers, and I am appalled as a citizen. I, I know that based on, on a couple of, of little snippets of information that I have heard, that there are two employees that could leave, that could get a payout, not, not individually, but totaling together over fifty thousand dollars. I think that is astounding, I think the citizens of the city, if they knew those numbers, they would be appalled that their tax money is going to pay someone three hundred and sixty hours of sick leave when they leave employment. There are not other companies that, that function this way, and they are a for-profit business. We aren't. We have to rely upon taxpayers to, to have taxes to pay these kinds of salaries or these kinds of benefits, and it's just not there. I think you need to make a change in this, and you need to do it quickly. I don't think this is something that is, can sit on the back burner and allow anything to happen, because if you do have someone that retires or leaves with this policy intact, as it is now, you will be required to pay it. And I think that's wrong, and there is just no way anybody can sit back and think that it is okay to spend that kind of money on top of the other benefits in retirement that this city offers, and especially not for sick leave. Thank you.
Steve?
So, you had at least a... In late nineteen eighties, I worked for a company, put together an HR book, major, major calls. I had the same concerns that, that you got. I was shown about four different studies that show for every hour a person in an office is out, it costs the company two point seven times their salary. So, actually, the person accruing their sick, their, their sick leave to be paid a second time, basically, saves the company that point seven of the salary. You're looking at the, the...
I didn't see it.
Okay? As for people not taking sick leave, I worked for companies before I came here for twenty-five years. In that entire time, I took one, basically. There are people who just don't get sick. You know, there are people who get sick of things, but... I'm just saying, there is, there are financial, and it could have changed over, over the years, I'm not saying that. Okay, and I hope you understand that. I'm just saying that at the time, when the Human Resources book that I took part in was written, it was two point seven times, and I've always remembered that stat. And the, the solution was to cap the numbers, because what people will do, I guarantee you, if you're gonna cap the numbers, they're gonna find, they're gonna be sick during, they're gonna be sick during the year. And there's not a darn thing you can do to real estate. So, you're gonna lose that two point seven times of their daily work, uh, because of the way they interact and, and affect other people's production. That's why it works out.
Thank you. Ron?
Ron Truitt is resident. It is a area that needs to be looked at, um, at. Irregardless, first of all, you need to consider one component, that in the year of retirement, if you change the policy, I think you need to pay that year's worth of accrued, accrued sick time. But my point is, I'm driving back, since Councilman is talking about all the issues in the Personnel Policies, I think you do need a workshop to work this through, and, uh, spend... spend the time on that so you make the right decisions. Thank you.
We're still early, we're not, it's not eleven thirty yet, so Dana Billen resident. I, I obviously feel very strongly about this. I think our sick leave policy definitely needs to be addressed. I, um, agree that it needs to be sooner, not later, like very quickly. There are people that do have the possibility of walking out the door with large jumps of change. The main thing I looked at is when I looked at that five-year thing, um, the amount that we paid out could have funded, Mr. Crotto tells us how short staffed we are, that could have easily funded just one position with benefits and everything. The amount that we paid out for people to walk out the door with unused sick leave. And you start looking at some of the numbers of those eleven, we could fund positions in this city. Public Works is crying for people. Administrative, we need people. These funds could be used for something that benefits the entire city and not just a few individuals. So I, I obviously think it's something that's addressed and it's not focused at any one individual, it's as a city. I think we have an issue with this policy. It's been very generous in the past. Unfortunately, we are not in a situation we can continue to, to do that. And basically, it's a perk. It's a benefit. It's not something, we're not taking sick leave away. It is still there for their use, but at the end of the day, when you leave employment and you walk away with whatever you have used.
Look at both of them.
Sure.
Montecor, make a drive. I agree we shouldn't be paying sick leave, but if you reverse the policy right now, how many people are going to be sick? Eight hours a month. They get the, uh, eight hours a month sick leave, they're going to take the eight hours a month sick leave. As far as using, not using sick leave when they're sick, if they get, when they retire or leave the city, they get paid to vacation. If they're using, they get paid a hundred percent. If they're using vacation for sick leave, we're making out of that. We're paying sixty fifty percent. But the policy does need to be changed.
Okay, I gotta bring you back to the council. I just, the difference between payout and hours accrued, the hours accrued would just go away?
Correct. The payouts, uh, capped at the three hundred and sixty hours, fifty percent seventy.
Can I bring you back to the council for some, uh, direction?
Well, I did find the ordinance. It was in two thousand and two when this was added to the personal policy. And again, like I said, I, the, the entire policy needs to be, be looked at. Do I think it's appropriate for the staff to do it? Probably, probably not. You know, I brought these issues up before. Maybe it's best that we give direction for it to be, the proposal to be written, just like, I mean, did, did you have a workshop and include the, the, the employees back every time this was adopted or change the personnel policy, all, all these ordinances? No. Well, I just, I know that I'm not happy about it. I know that also, let's talk about vacation. I lose my vacation. I can be denied my vacation. I was denied my vacation last year at the end of the year and I lose it. You, you have to set, how, I don't even understand how you can budget the city if you don't know what you're budgeting. So I, 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 I think that we need to start amended these policies in this personal policy handbook.
So how do you think we should go about it?
Talk about, let's talk about it. I, I really don't, don't know, but I was pretty shocked when I saw this. I mean, you can read it in a policy, but then when you put it to hours and hourly rate.
But, but let me ask you, if we went over the policy handbook, personal policy handbook like we want to do, would that cover many of these items?
It would be a long meeting, but we would have, yeah.
Well, we'd have to, yeah. I mean, would it, would it address these issues?
Yeah. We got to go through it piece by page because it's, you know, it's from nineteen eighty-seven and it's just been kind of similar to our land development regulations, just amended here and there and it caused problems.
LDRs took what, six months? How long did they take the LDR? Four years? Four years, but four, four years.
Well, would you, um, think that in order to protect us, like we talked about here earlier about people checking out and getting big checks, would you think that we should go tonight and make a motion to limit this and hold off on your thing until we can workshop or whatever? Have one meeting, single, it's going to be a single week?
If you look at other policies, it'll say if you're using sick time for vacation time, you're dismissed from your job. I mean, you, you, there are certain things, or if you're on vacation and you fall in sick, you know, there's other, you've got to work on other policies. It's, it's not appropriate to, to do those things.
No, no, I understand.
But I'm just saying, I, I, I don't know what the solution is. I, I.
Although Ron did make a good point. That was a very interesting point. I hadn't thought of that. That that would be a good thing when we do work this to factor that in. But what I'm saying is, is to.
Again, I think a lot of things, it's getting late, but the cake pick report is very important and unfortunately, we got a few things, part before the board, so you're on a few things tonight. But do you just, do you just wait and workshop things? We're, we're halfway through the year, we're getting into a budget season, got a very interested community that wants, wants some things done. What do you do? I don't know. I'm willing, hey, I'm willing to call some special meetings, I'm willing to do it, but, something needs to be done.
There, there was a letter that we got from the lawyer today that passed along to us. I read it, but it was long and I'm not sure how it affected all of this. So I don't know if we want to make a policy tonight with that letter. I'm not sure exactly what he said.
Well, basically, he said the power rests with the city council on almost every issue relating to sick leave, perhaps with the exception if it's covered by a pension plan, you've got to work your way through those particular issues. But in terms of the personnel policy, that the, the city council has the total control over that.
So in other words, we can make a motion tonight that we limit, uh, sick leave payout to whatever, a hundred dollars, eighty hours, something like that.
You could authorize a ordinance, the city, the personnel policy by charter, I'm not sure it is anymore. It's not a requirement, but at one time it was in, when this was adopted in nineteen eighty-seven, Councilman DeNan referenced nineteen eighty-seven, with the amendment to the charter in nineteen eighty-six, it was a requirement that personnel policy be adopted by ordinance. And so all these provisions are ordinances. So if the council changed it, you would have to have two readings and amend the ordinance. amend the personnel policy by ordinance.
You know, I don't think that's in the charter.
No, I think it was taken out in two thousand and nine. Yeah. So it's no longer a requirement, but since this is adopted by ordinance, you amend it by ordinance.
And so if you go back, which everything is now on the transparency page, you go back and you look, you can look at the policy, but then you have, you go back and look at the ordinances that got you there. And that's, that's what I've been doing and it's quite amazing, actually.
Okay, but again, but to get back to the point, then to protect the city from anybody leaving life away and us having to pay out another inordinate amount of sick leave, if we could, we could, what? Make a motion to, to direct the city attorney to develop an ordinance to limit sick leave payout to a certain amount for present employees? I mean, and then we'll work on all the other stuff later? I'm just throwing it out here, but, but.
Yeah. Why do you want to pay out?
Or that, or that.
Well, I work out and get paid off this. Do you get paid off this?
No, I don't pay off.
Chair, what's your?
There, there is something too, where you have eleven employees of the city who have no fault of their own acted, I believe, in what the city says they should do, how they take sick leave, how they take vacation time and what they are entitled to. To go, to go cold turkey on these eleven, just to say we're going to save money is, is something that, uh, it's very difficult to do.
I'm just finding the tails of Belkirk.
Well, I just, look at, if you guys get anything out there, but I, I just, we need to think about it. You just, you just can't go from another boom to, the F was to do it, I remember the F was, you know, I had a hundred and twenty hours, they said you got to come down to sixty and we had to, and we had to cut it, but they gave us, I think it was either a year or a year to get there or something. I, I don't think to go from three sixty as nine people have to zero is what we as a city, uh, I've belly up the bar to.
Perhaps not. Some of the other components here are, they're trading in, if they, if they don't take sick leave, then they're getting vacation.
Then, then I think the city manager has to work that with these departments. And, and if you're going to, if you're going to take vacation, if you're going to be sick, if you're going to do something, city manager has to work that out with the department. Has to make that, if you go into the doctor, this is it. Now, I'm not saying that three sixty is a magic number.
That's what, nine ways? Nine ways?
Yeah, probably. But, but I am saying, I think that zero is not, is, is not a number either. Yeah, probably, but but I am saying I think that zero is not is is not a number either. Thank you.